Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's scrutiny committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governments in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, could they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee, and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings, and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I'll now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, thank you very much. And if members could confirm their present when I call their name, convener.
Present.
I've got apologies from Bailey Wright and councillor Crookshank kindly attending as her substitute. Is councillor Crookshank present?
Present.
Thank you. Bailey McPherson.
Good afternoon, present.
Thank you. Bailey Scott.
Here.
Thank you very much. Bailey Sors.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Depiler, Provence, Curdell.
Present.
Councillor El Nakla.
Here.
And finally, councillor Short.
Yeah, thank you. I'm here, Willie.
Thank you very much. That takes you on to the agenda, and the first item there before is declarations of interest. This will not any members made any declarations to the content of the agenda as it stands. Okay, and there being no declarations, then it takes you on to item two, which is internal audit reports, a report by the chief internal auditor Cathy Wiley. Cathy, you looking to say a few words on this to start with?
Yes, please. Thank you, convener.
Cheers.
We have one report that's being reported to you this time, and that's our review of the internal controls in place to manage and monitor the use of the government procurement cards, including the authorisation of the card transactions. These cards are used within the council as an additional method of ordering goods and services. And in the year two, the year twenty-one, twenty-two, we had three hundred and ninety-eight cards that were active, and spend on them was just under a million pounds. There are two figures in the report that you have in front of you on page three. The difference in these figures is purely down to timing, because it's credit cards that we're talking about. One is the figure of the actual spend, and the other is the payments that have been made in the period. The overall conclusion for this work was that the, there are weaknesses in the system which should be addressed. And there are a list there on page three and four of what those areas are. Most of these are around making sure that the procedures are up to date and that they are in the right place for people to find them, that people who should be following the procedures know which procedures they're looking at, and that, that the proper checks are being made in terms of both approving the use of the card and also that people using the cards are following the proper procedures for that. There's also recommendations in there about making sure that training takes place if it needs to with people within the teams that are involved with this, and also around making sure that appropriate reconciliation processes are in place. There's recommendations in there about making sure that there are procedures to follow if people are on long-term sick, and also around the correct people undertaking work if people are not available to do the checking. There is a comment from the, the service there in terms of the procurement team having had a period of significant turnover of staff and absences, but the, the posts that are needing to be filled are currently being advertised for recruitment. And I think that's all that I really want to draw attention to here, but obviously happy to answer any queries.
Okay, I see Bailey McPherson's looking to come in, so Bailey McPherson.
Thank you very much, convener, and thanks to Cathy for our introduction. And my question really is around the use of these. Three hundred and ninety-eight strikes me as quite a large number for a staff of what, about six thousand? That's well more than five percent of the, the staff. And I was just really wondering what the rationale, I presume there is a rationale as to who, who gets them and who requires to get them, and that is consistent throughout departments. A million pounds of expenditure, while it's not large in relation to the council's totality of expenditure, is still a large amount of money. And I was just really wondering also, is an audit sample taken of these, how big is that? And also, it does indicate that, quite rightly, these have to be used for just low-cost purchases and the equivalent of petty cash in a way, I suppose. Is that actually the case? What's the highest amount that's been spent on them? And are officers satisfied that it's not being used just to circumvent going through the proper civic purchasing system? Because quite frankly, tapping a credit card is a little bit easier than going through the purchase order system. So I'd just like the reassurance that the vast bulk of larger items are going through the correct way. Well, what I would use the correct way, which is through the civic purchasing ordering system. I would just really like if officers could give some reassurances in that regard.
Paul.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson, for the questions, for just trying to answer the various points. So in relation to the number of cards that are in place, I can confirm, I don't have a detailed breakdown, albeit eighty percent of the overall cards relate to services within schools, social work services and welfare teams. So that's where the majority of these cards in place. I can confirm that they are for lower costs. So generally speaking, these cards will be up to a limit of either five hundred pounds or a thousand pounds, albeit there will be cases where due to the circumstances of certain posts, that the limit is higher than that. In relation to checking, I can confirm that moving forward, and part of the response to the audit is to ensure that there will be regular spot checks carried out on all these transactions. And one of the other recommendations from the audit was to ensure that there is a full reconciliation of the procurement card system back to the ledger, and can confirm that that reconciliation is almost incomplete and is almost complete and will be in place by the end of the financial year. In terms of a rationale, there is a requirement as part of each case in terms of individuals that are applying for a card to support a business case that would ensure them needing to use it, and it may involve, you know, for example, if they need to make purchases out with business hours, et cetera, or purchases online, et cetera, but we would ensure that that's considered and also authorised by the individual's line manager. And I can finally confirm that the current cards are due to expire at the end of March, and that will be an opportunity to look at the three hundred and ninety-eight individuals and make an assessment based on the usage of the card, whether or not they're required to continue to have them. So happy to undertake that exercise.
I could have thanked Mr Thompson for that very fulsome response, and it is very helpful, I have to say. And in terms of the business case, I think that's a good one. I can, I think we would all agree there are some situations, and indeed some roles, welfare teams are a very good example actually, of where having access to this is actually really rather helpful. So I'm not saying I'm against use of government procurement cards, it's just that they have to be used appropriately and the, the actions that you're talking about that are either in place or will be in place, I think will certainly help. And lastly, I think the spot checks on, on purchases is a very helpful thing to do as well in terms of giving reassurance. So grateful to Mr Thompson for his reply.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor El Nakla.
El Nakla, thank you. Yeah, thanks, Paul. That was a really helpful response to Fraser's questions. And I guess it would be nice to have that little bit more information regarding transactions. I was just, I think it's, I don't think anyone should ever be out of pocket when they're at work. You know, no one should have to cover the cost of their work from their own pocket and be reimbursed. So I think it's really helpful and important to have these cards. I just wanted to ask, is there any safeguarding with the bank, for example, if there was an unusual amount charged to the card? Is there a way that you'd be alerted or, I don't know if that's a brand, but if, yeah, is there kind of safeguarding there?
So one of these safeguards would be in relation to the overall limits, which, as I've explained, are fairly low in general. However, there is a requirement to ensure that each and every transaction that is included on the card is approved by the individual's cardholder. Unfortunately, given the nature of how these cards are used, the purchase is made in advance of approval. But the guidance to cardholders is that there's a requirement that they should immediately record the transaction on the procurement card system and seek approval from the cardholder at that point. And that's certainly something that we're looking to highlight and enforce as part of the changes to the guidance that the report highlights.
That's great. Thank you.
Councillor Short.
Thank you, convener. Paul, you'll not be surprised to hear, seeing as I've been told to bang on about this, community wealth building. If you are, and you said yourself, a lot of them are in a school setting, will that be part of the guidance that's there? Because I'm sure we would rather that purchases were done at local level than, than kind of going outside the city or the region. I don't know if it's a possibility, because obviously we don't have sight of what's actually being bought. But if we can support the local economy, then presumably that would be something that would be encouraged, seeing as it's a million pounds at the end of the day.
Bill.
Yeah. Thank you, councillor Short, for the question. So I can confirm that as part of our wider procurement strategy, that we're absolutely in support of community wealth building. That's obviously a key strategic priority moving forward. One of the uses of the cards is that in addition to using them within local businesses, they can be used online. So we would encourage staff wherever possible to make call purchases and have that locality wherever possible.
Paul, could I maybe ask about the additional security that's on the cards? I mean, you know, if I was using my own card, often on the internet, there would be, you know, an additional check that would come up asking me to use a certain digit or a password that I might have put together. Albeit it might well give us the opportunity to change that password at the same time. But is there that level of security so as that we've got, we're not getting the cards handed to each other in the workplace to allow that spend for anyone to be able to make it, as it were? Albeit you'll have the person responsible for the card making the claim?
So the guidance is clear that any individual shouldn't be using anyone else's card. And, and it's a requirement in terms of using any required, is that individual's supervisor that's responsible for authorising the transaction, that's a further control. In terms of using them online, you know, we would certainly make clear in the guidance that individuals shouldn't be, for example, storing these details within a site or an area where anyone else could have access to them. And the, the consequences for doing so are very clear within the guidance as well. So any, any individual that wasn't adhering to that, you know, would be subject to the appropriate disciplinary process.
Can I ask another one? How quickly would accounts be able to clear the credit card if it had certainly a five hundred limit? How quickly would you either increase that limit or, or, you know, so as to allow that individual to carry on their next day's work, should they need to go, go back out and make a further spend? You know, so as to, you know, there are no phone and rings, who's got a card and who could come and help? Given that, you know, you're saying that you record the spend as soon as, how soon is that expected? And then how clean do, how soon do you allow it, top up to allow a five hundred quid or a thousand quid to be spent again?
So the, the payments are generally made monthly. So it would, you know, if it reached that limit, that there would be the maximum period. Notwithstanding that, there is a process in place where individuals can request to have their credit limit on individual cards increased. That needs to be signed and agreed by their approver, i.e. their line manager, and then subsequently comes to myself for approval. So not until that process has happened and has been checked would we be even considering increasing anyone's limits.
If you, if someone made a five hundred spend day one, it could be thirty days that that card's absolutely useless to anybody. That doesn't sound like it's the best move for anybody that's expected to need a card.
So apologies, Bailey, I'm not quite following your question.
If, if I spent the five hundred pound day one, but you're saying that I couldn't get that increased in any way, for the next twenty-nine days or thirty, thirty days of that month, that card would be useless. It'd be in my pocket for nothing. I couldn't, you know, I couldn't sort of get that five hundred pound cleared to move on to make another spend. It seems to me like making a five hundred pound spend would be quite easy.
So in that regard, certainly the card, the value of the card couldn't be increased beyond that in terms of if the individual wanted to do so. I see Robert's looking to come in.
Yeah. Apologies, convener. The, I think, I can understand what you're saying. I think there is a challenge about making sure the level on the card is appropriate for the type of spend someone's going to be undertaking, and that would have to be assessed at the beginning and may have to be adjusted. I think possibly what you're thinking about is the fact if you make the limit higher, there's a greater risk. And there's always a degree of risk associated with giving someone a corporate purchasing card where the controls and checks and balances are in place, are that they are reviewed, and there's a track and monitoring of the systems that's in place. So, so there is, there is a balance there. I would hope that we're not in a position where we're only giving someone a limit that they can, they can't actually do what's necessary for their job. But part of the reason that there is a team of people on some of these things is that does provide some flexibility, convener.
I'll leave it at that. Okay, there seems to be no other questions. This report agreed? Thank you. Willie? Okay, thank you very much, convener. Item three, then before his internal audit plan update in progress report. This is for noting and approval. Cathy, you looking to say anything on this report as well?
Yes, please. Thank you, convener.
Thank you.
This, this report has quite a few different things in it, so I'll just briefly highlight what it's, what it's presenting to you. The first thing is that I've had a review of the work that we had planned up to the sort of end of twenty-two, twenty-three, which would take us into probably about May. And it's obvious that the amount of work in the plan is not going to be completed by then. So I wanted to just take some items out of the plan, just to make it more manageable. And I've listed the items that were taken out at four point three in the report on page five. I've done this on a risk-assessed basis. We've looked at things there where some of the services have asked us to delay a piece of work because there's things going on that they want to complete before we undertake the audit. There are some areas where there are some other reviews going on where we could take assurance from them instead of doing internal audit work, and that'll save a bit of duplication. And I'm quite comfortable that if we take these items out, there's still going to be enough work and enough conclusions for me to be able to provide my annual opinion, which will come to you in June this year. There's just one other one in there that I wanted to draw attention to specifically, and that's the last bullet point on page five about the preparation for the external review of compliance with the public sector internal audit standards. I've explained in paragraph four point five that we need to have that external review undertaken every five years. The people who were undertaking that review for us have asked to postpone it by a few months, and that will take us past the five-year deadline for having that review done. It's a technical non-compliance with the standards, if you like, but it's something that a lot of the local government internal audit services are having this, this time round, just because of COVID and some of the delays that have taken place in managing to get some of the reviews done. So I'm, I'm not overly concerned about it. I don't think you should be overly concerned about it, but I can give you more information about that if you want to. So if I move on now to page seven onwards, there's the table which you're used to seeing. It's the same table that you normally see, except I've changed it a little bit. I've added a column to the end of it, which shows you an assurance level. On page thirteen of this report, there is a table which explains what these assurance levels mean. And if you look at the middle column in that table there, the audit, review, opinion, these are the conclusions that you see in the individual reports that come to you. So if we think about the report that we've just looked at on the procurement cards, the conclusion there was that the review, that there were weaknesses in the system which should be addressed, and therefore that would be limited assurance. And so in the table that I'm presenting, just in terms of the progress on page eight, at the top of page eight, you'll see that item with limited assurance in the final column there. The reason I'm doing this is so that when you get the progress report, as well as being able to see where everything is in terms of how we're getting on with the items in the plan, you can see the history for this year of what the assurance levels have been, and you can get that cumulative sense of where we are with the work that we've been doing for this year. The final thing, which I've added into the report, which you won't have seen previously, is on page fifteen. And that's just an update on where we are with the implementation of the outstanding audit actions. This is the position. It's a snapshot at the fourteenth of January, updated for a few items that had been cleared before the twenty-third of January. This is a moving feast, so it's never, it never stays the same. But I'm quite pleased to see that the work that the Risk and Assurance Board has been doing has meant that a number of actions have been cleared from this table. If I'd shown you this a month ago, it would have had a larger number in it. And I'm also happy to report that none of the critical actions that have been agreed at that point were outstanding. So that's positive movement in terms of getting these items cleared. And that's, I think, all that I wanted to draw attention to, but happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that. Bailey McPherson.
Thanks indeed, convener, and again, thanks to Cathy for our introduction. It's around the things that have been dropped that I've got a couple of questions about. One is the workforce management proposed review, which is now being, well, not reviewed. And my, my question really is around, is it not the case, given that workforce management has changed a lot because of the pandemic, and frankly, it has not gone back to where we were prior to COVID? Obviously, there's a significant amount of members of staff who now either work from home or work partially from home than they did prior to the COVID pandemic. And I just wonder if in relation to the efficiency of the council, if this is not something that we really do have to be considering to ensure really that we're satisfied that changed arrangements, which are the case for some staff, not all obviously, but are actually working to the benefit of the council and delivering services at least as well, if not better than was the case prior to the pandemic taking place.
So if I, if I can just comment on that, yeah, I take your point, and I think it is something that we will look at in due course, and it may be something that we add back into the plan for twenty-three, twenty-four, when we bring that forward.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful. I, I would say the one area where I get complaints, and I fully accept it's anecdotal, but the one thing, and I've raised it at this committee before, is in relation to the perception, if you walk into a council office of it frankly not having the buzz and so on. Dundee House is the prime example, but frankly, if I walked into the West District office, I would feel the same. And, and so the public face to the, to the Dundee public, and also, and again anecdotal, complaints that you ring a particular department direct and it rings out and rings out and rings out. And I get that from time to time from constituents. So these are areas where, and it may just be anecdotal, but the reality is, I think we do need to have some, you know, look at, you know, just to satisfy ourselves that we are actually running services as well. I do have a second question, but I noticed the chief executive's got his hand up, so I'll be quiet at that meantime. Thanks.
Greg, you looking to come in?
Yeah, thanks, convener, and thanks, Bailey McPherson. I think the points you've made are helpful. Just to give you the assurance that the whole leadership team is responsible for ensuring that their services deliver an efficient and effective service, and in carrying out the approach to hybrid working, where we've looked at the, the different type of work models. It's not solely based on what an employee wants, it's about what's right for the service. So if there are any particular concerns that elected members have, I would encourage them to raise them with the service, if indeed it's around things like phones not being answered. I've reflected on the point made about public offices, and I think one of the challenges that we are seeing as a local authority is that the public are not using our offices like they did pre-pandemic. So the buzz even around the number of people who are in Dundee House when it's open is significantly less, because what we're finding is a number of people are choosing to do the transaction online. But certainly, if the piece of work is reflected back in the internal audit, then there's further assurances that Cathy can provide over indeed what I think heads of service and executive directors can do if there are specific elected members' queries about services not being efficient or not having that customer service that we aspire to within Dundee City Council.
Yeah, I'm grateful for Mr Colgan's further comments. I would say in part at Dundee House, the fact that there's less members of the public, and you're absolutely right. You know, a lot of people have changed habits, but also we don't provide the ability for you to pay your council tax at Dundee House anymore. And I think that's definitely a, and in my view, a detriment or knock-on effect. But, but as I say, Cathy's reassurance that the, the issue will be looked at, you know, hopefully in twenty-three, twenty-four is helpful. My other question was around the absence management, again, that having been dropped only meantime and will be picked up again in twenty-three, twenty-four. I was just really wondering, obviously, we've, we've discussed rates of absence and so on at length in the past. But I think it is an area that is worthy of review, and I'm glad it will come back. I'm just really wondering if Cathy could give some indication as to when it's likely to be picked up in twenty-three, twenty-four? Because I think it is an area that we really require to keep an eye on, as much for staff wellbeing as anything else. And I, so I'd just be grateful for Cathy's feedback on that.
Yeah, so there are a couple of things that are important to that. One of them is that we will pick up some aspects of this in the piece of work that's still in the plan around staff wellbeing. So when we scope that, we'll, we'll cover a little bit to do with, with absence and that there. And the other thing is in terms of when it comes, I'm not quite sure where it'll land in the twenty-three, twenty-four plan. I think it's an area where there are some things going on within HR in terms of new systems and ways of working. So we might be, you know, the planning of when the audit comes will be determined by when that reaches a point where it makes sense to look at what's been happening. But maybe, and I, and I don't know for sure, because I've not had this conversation with them, but we will be bringing the twenty-three, twenty-four plan to you in April. We may at that point have a better idea of the timing. We might not at that point still know, but if I do know, I'll be able to bring that to you then.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Can I maybe ask in relation to the monitoring of contractors and why we've decided that that could be dropped out of the plan in the meantime? And I've got concerns from the point of view of, you know, the contract that we took on with the roofs, we weren't able to provide that we are a quality-assured organisation enough, and we probably expect it out of contractors. And of course, you know, if I was getting work done in the house, such as an electrical charger put in for a charger put in for a electric vehicle, then I would be wanting the reassurance that they are qualified and that there's a certificated work and testing going to go on to make sure that I didn't have a fire in the house and that what's went on complies with, you know, regional electricity companies in the area. So, you know, I'm just wondering why we've decided to, to drop that, given that, you know, it's like we dropped the ball when it come to the roofs of no having quality assurance.
I think, I think from the perspective of taking it out of this plan, this will come back into the twenty-three, twenty-four plan. So it's not that we won't do this piece of work, it's just remove, moving it a bit further down the line. And the reason that I thought it would be okay to do that for this was because there are a number of actions that are already being taken as a result of the other reviews that have gone on around what you've just been speaking about and therefore there should be actions happening now that should be addressing issues that have already been identified there. And if we come in to do this audit in twenty-three, twenty-four, we can look at what that action has done and make sure that it's actually in place and working.
Okay. So don't see any other questions, so if there is no other questions, can I say can be agreed? Seems so. So that's the meeting finished then. Thanks for your time. I normally let everybody go home, but it's far too early, so it's back to work for yous. See yous later.
Thanks, convener.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you.